Call the meeting to order for, I don't know, December the something, the 5th. If everybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Mr. Campbell, if you would lead us.
Welcome back.
It's good to see you again.
Thank you, thank you. Good to be back. Father God, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you how you continue to bless us and keep us. At this time and this season, God, we want to make sure we keep you and make sure everyone understands you are the reason for this season. But also at this time, I want to take time to pray for Ed Z and his family, God, as they're going through this time of bereavement. Be with them, give them traveling mercy and traveling grace, giving them strength that they need to get through this time. Let them know that you will be on all sides and you will hold them up against the strength that they need. And give them what they need at this time. So we want to let him know that we're concerned about him, we care about him, we're praying for their family as they go through this. Also, God, be with all of our council persons, be with each and every one of them present. Give them strength they need to be our leaders and help them to make the right decisions, God. Even if they make the wrong decisions, God, help us to learn from it and then make the right decision the next time. I wish to be with all of our staff, our mayor, all of our leaders of our cities, continue to keep them strong, keep them protected, and let them know that we appreciate all they do. We thank you for our citizens that come to this meeting tonight, be with them and be with their families. Bless them and keep them. And we pray, God, to give us all traveling mercy and traveling grace as we go home from this place. And we pray all our homes are safe and our families are safe. God, we love you and we ask it all in the name of Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Roll call, please.
Counselperson White.
Present.
Counselperson Yon.
Present.
Counselperson Naples.
Here.
Counselperson Gill.
Here.
Counselperson Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson Samuel.
Here.
Counselperson Rodriguez.
Present.
Let the record reflect, eight council members are present, Counselperson Sisobny is absent.
Okay, we have minutes to be approved, minutes from the November 21st workshop.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes. And from the 21st meeting.
I'm gonna make a motion that, it was in your copy, but he'll have the corrected copy to sign under my comments, under council comments. It says that Connie Sellers will be sitting on a county council, but it's actually been changed to commissioner. If I misspoke, sorry, but she's going to county commissioner, not county council. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Approval of the agenda?
Most to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in second. Anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes. Claims, if I remember correctly.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'll start because we won't know for her to give a total if that's actually gonna be the total. Usually she'll say the malic claims. Is that okay, Heather? Okay. Going through the claims on Friday, which I'll let Heather speak more on it, but we had quite a few items that came out of holiday supplies that weren't actually holiday supplies. So we actually fixed those, like on page seven and eight, we had under holiday supplies to a David Miles, that actually is gonna be changed to professional services.
Holiday, holiday services.
Holiday professional services? I stand corrected, thank you.
Holiday services, yeah.
Okay. And then did you make that, did you add that line?
Yes.
Okay.
Where are we at?
Page seven.
It's on page seven. There's a 250 under, well, the vendor is David Miles. Should be halfway down the page. And then on page eight, they're right together, it's two, three hundreds for the same vendor, David Miles.
There were also a couple more after you left.
I'm gonna let you bring.
I don't see on page eight those two claims.
I shrink.
Oh, gotcha.
That's changing from contractual to holiday services?
Right.
Okay.
Holiday professional services.
Right, right.
Right, because if they change it to contractual, a lot of this stuff, we don't have contracts or agreements for. And then on page seven, under holiday supplies, it's the, yeah, SUP, and it is for the amount of 13,550. Actually gonna have that claim pulled. And I talked with Heather, met with Heather and Paul this morning, and this is, since this is over the 5,000, and then plus this didn't get approved, there was a few other things in there, it wasn't under the holiday supplies, but that's gonna go under what now? Holiday?
The one for Fun Time Productions?
No, this is the one for SUP, Sounds Unlimited.
Oh, that one's gonna get pulled to be approved by the Parks Authority.
Right. But it can't be under the holiday supplies either because it was all labor and services rendered.
Right, it would need to go under holiday services.
Okay. And then on page 10, it is actually a pro-media claim for 8,390. That one's actually gonna be pulled too, because that'll be going for approval at the next Parks Authority meeting, and then it'll come back, those two will come back to our next council meeting to be approved. So, I mean, we just had to work together and we just changed the, like I said, from the holiday supplies, stuff like that. And then we had one that didn't have the ad, but we have the ad.
Yes.
One, we corrected a late fee, and then pretty much the rest of them are okay at my end, but I think Dustin has a few things.
Yeah, did you cover the one on page seven, the Victory Core?
I just brought up about, it was under the wrong, coming out of the wrong fund for holiday supplies. I was gonna let you speak.
I would like for that to be pulled as well.
Which one?
Victory Core, float medallion kits.
Oh, the 44573?
Yes. And then the So In Media Group for 400. Those have not been approved by the Parks Authority yet.
I'm sorry, what was the second claim?
It's So Indiana Media Group LLC.
Okay.
On page seven. Under advertisement?
For $400.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
On that one in particular, if, I assume that the department had decided to take out that advertising, who, and it wasn't approved by the Park Authority, but if the mayor advertises at Jeff High in a program, who approves that?
The mayor.
The mayor approves it. It doesn't go to a board because it's in his budget.
Right.
So do we anticipate that anything that Paul would wanna do in the same manner would need prior approval? Because I don't think that's happened in the past.
And that's kind of my beef. I think if, whatever he does should be approved by his board and then come to us. That's the oversight for that.
Right. And that's fine, but that clarification needs to be there ahead of time, because they're expecting a check, I'm sure.
I mentioned that at our last meeting, actually.
Okay.
Because we approved some that had not gone before the board, and then I made the statement that all the claims from Parks, go through the Parks Authority and then to us.
But with the Parks Authority meeting once a month, that's not gonna be feasible. We've gotta find a better way of streamlining claims rather than waiting for once a month approval. I don't think that, I mean, government's slow already at paying bills. Expecting a board that meets once a month to approve every claim through the Parks Department, I think is a little extreme.
I think all the invoices would be paid within 30 days. Now, I think that's normal practice in business. But something to, that we can discuss.
Just from my standpoint, as far as it being a legal claim, we didn't have a copy of the ad, which we now do, so.
Right.
Whenever it's paid, it is a legal claim, so.
What was the first one you had? I missed that. Oh, I'm sorry, I found it.
Victory Core.
I don't know what that is, but.
And then the one for Fun Time Productions and Party Central, those are also moving to holiday service. On that same page, seven. Right next to that David Miles, because those are services, not actually person.
The 2200, is that, no?
Twenty, yeah, the 2200, the 250 for David Miles, and the 220 for Party Central.
Gotcha.
Because that was rental for tables. Then we got the late fee, page two. The delay had a late fee included in that, 424, so we're taking $20.22 off of that So, just recap here. Page two, the $20.22 is coming off, which is included in the number that you have already, Vicki?
Yes.
Okay. And then page seven, the 13,550 was included in the new, the 44573 was not. And the 400 was not, so we'll have to take that number off.
He also pulled the.
And then the 8,390.
And then the 400 as well.
The 400, one with the ad.
Yes.
And then also, I think, did you pull the ones to David Miles?
You did.
I didn't pull them, I just.
No, I didn't.
You just changed that count.
Yeah, I just changed.
Like those pulled as well.
So we're taking those off.
So that's mine, 250, 300, and 300. We can get this on here, Heather. So we're taking.
I'd like to kind of maybe try to establish some sort, or at least a next step, unless we're, you know, every time we get claims, we're gonna be pulling until there's a communication with Parks, which is not gonna be for another month, when that board meets.
The next, the next Park Board meeting is set for, before our next council meeting because of the end of the year. So, I mean, these are all contracts that will be approved at that meeting, and then the claims can be approved at the council meeting subsequent. All of these contracts have to be approved by the board, though, because their services are already rendered.
Yeah.
If we don't approve them, if the Park Authority, for whatever reason, didn't approve them at their meeting, we would still have to approve the claim, because if not, we're gonna get sued. Sending the contracts back to be signed to have, have that in place before we cut the check, I think is.
That one was included.
Should put some people on notice that they need to do a little bit better diligence of getting things lined up before it comes here.
Sure, yeah, those were all.
But the end result's gonna be the same.
And a meeting this morning with Paul and with Heather, and Sarah was also in the meeting, and so was, Heather pulled Peggy in that does the claims. And one way to streamline it is, I believe that either Heather or Vicki is gonna send Bill a copy of the Parks claims on a Monday. So then by the time we, it gets to where I see them on a Friday, they have some more time to.
Figure things out.
Figure things out, because I think a lot of the issue is me sitting on a Friday and then turn around by Monday.
Is there, like, for example, if we passed a claim, and then at a later meeting, Parks did not, decides they don't wanna approve that claim, is there any remedy for that? We can't adjust it?
The ultimate approval is here.
Okay.
But this is, I mean, this is, it's part of a lack of coordination in the Parks Department, because these things should be coming to the authority well ahead of time.
Before they're already.
Right.
Rendered through.
So.
And Paul's under that understanding now.
So every, every Park claim goes to the Parks Board first?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's the, I think that's a challenge of how the new authority was set up, is that was not established.
No, that was not.
How, how claims are processed through the Parks Department was not a part of the ordinance that was passed at the beginning of the year. And maybe that's something that the council should look at revisiting to give more clarification, because there's not, that requirement doesn't stand unless it's granted at an ordinance.
I thought the ordinance does mention that, how.
Mentions.
First brought before the Parks Authority, but then they're also, after approval, recommendation from the Parks Authority, it's brought to the council for final approval.
I could be wrong.
How is it that it goes to the Parks first?
I could be wrong.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I mean, I could be wrong too, but I'm pretty sure we put that in there, because I know Dustin, you just wanna introduce, I think me and Dustin talked about that. I thought it was in there, it's right, Dustin?
My memory doesn't go back that far, but.
Well, and then.
I think any board who has governance is, that would be their duty. So, making that clear. Last meeting, and this time, now they know the proper procedure. At first, I first brought it up when we, after we did the new authority, there was this big claim for the big screen at the River, at the River stage.
Right.
First time I brought this up. This needs to go before the Parks Authority, before it comes to us.
And that did. But there was a presentation made, I don't know.
You need to keep in mind, too, we also, we had what was called the Parks Authority Advisory Board that was in place. They actually, they went through a fine comb with all the claims, they asked questions, and then it was sent on, but that board is no longer, I don't think they're meeting.
They do.
They do?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think they see claim, I don't think they sell claims anymore, but.
I don't know if they see the claims, but they do meet.
Don't know what that department does.
And also, no, there's been times when the president of the Parks Board, Parks Authority, will call me to make sure I have a contract, you know.
Okay.
It should have already been.
Has that process gotten better?
That's not new. I mean, we sat down before.
Yeah, we've done, yeah.
When State Board of Accounts brought that to our attention, I know we've recently, so, yeah, we've, we've met with them before, way before the change in the Parks Authority contracts. That would be in place.
I mean, they're half-hazard. Sometimes I get them beforehand, sometimes I don't.
I would also just add, this is kinda switching gears a little, but I didn't see hardly any, if any, credit card claims, and I, and thank you, I know, I was gonna thank Les, but he's not here, and I, but I know well thank him, because it had gotten to the point where credit card claims were all through here, and they may be for large amounts, and you really didn't know what they were without really looking into it. At least now, you have a little better understanding, because they're, and we have better tracking of that, so.
Yes.
So I thank you for, and thank you to the administration for acting on that concern.
Do you have a new total, Heather?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the claims that the change of amount of $1,154,891.49. I'll second.
Anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes. Court of the clerk?
I don't think so.
Yes, ma'am?
I mean, you know, no, I don't.
You're like, I don't think I'm gonna report.
Unfinished business. We have 16 OR 81, ordinance fixing the salaries of elected officials, nothing has changed. This is just for a final reading.
Motion to approve the third and final.
I'll second.
Motion in second, anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes.
Did we approve the agenda?
We did.
Okay. My mind's not.
I don't know. I'm still on vacation.
Number two, 16 OR 82, this is the ordinance establishing the fund to accept, accept the infrastructure funds. The only change, I think, had to do with some verbiage. Is that right?
Yes. Les discussed it at the last meeting about changing the name from the clerk is to establish a fund to controllers to establish the fund. That's the only change. And I think you guys voted to amend it, amend it already.
We did.
Motion to approve in the third and final.
Second.
Yes. I wasn't here last time, and as probably mentioned, where, where is this, what projects are, will this be going to? Because it says we're, we're using a million from the Lloyd, that special Lloyd we got. So there's $2 million here, and.
Yes.
I'm curious just what projects it's going for.
Not sure if it's the 10th Street project, or if it's.
Yes.
I believe it's 10th.
This is, the million dollars that's mentioned as the match is coming from the grant that we got, the $4 million grant for, that he wanted to use for Holman Lane. And the million, the extra million dollars is gonna go towards the same project, as far as I understood.
The Holmans or 10th?
Holman.
Holmans.
Oh, it's Holman.
As I understand.
We're calling it North.
North 10th slash Holman.
North 10th, yeah.
It's.
Thank you.
But yeah, there's multiple 10th Street projects.
There's a motion in second, anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Metcalf, 16 OR 83, this is to transfer.
Yes, we have one addition to that, which comes about with all of these holiday supplies and holiday services. You just transferred it, your last meeting, $15,000 into holiday supplies. Didn't realize that that money really isn't a supply, it's a service, so now we're transferring the money back to holiday supply line for $15,000.
So transferring from supplies to services, or?
From holiday supplies to holiday services in the Park Fund.
And how much?
I'll make a motion to approve in the third and final.
Yeah, the.
We need to.
amend it.
Motion to amend.
You want to add the $15,000 transfer? You vote on that, then you approve the ordinance.
Make a motion to amend 2016 OR 83 to add the transfer addition of the $15,000 coming from holiday supplies to holiday services.
I'll second.
Motion in second, anything further? This is the motion to amend the ordinance, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes. Now a motion to.
I'll make the motion to approve 2016 OR 83 in the third and final.
I'll also second.
Motion in second, anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes.
Yep.
Yes.
New business, Scott Laris. This is an ordinance establishing internal control standards and materiality threshold for the city of Jeffersonville.
Yes, this ordinance, we've kinda talked about it in prior meetings, it's required under new provisions of Indiana Code, and the requirement is, is that no later than December 31st of this calendar year, that all municipal entities approve an ordinance establishing what are called internal control standards. There are what they call the uniform minimum control standards that State Board of Accounts has published in the form of a manual. This particular ordinance includes those, what we call the five components and 17 principles of the minimum uniform control standards, and includes them verbatim as issued by the State Board of Accounts. I did a little research, just looking at how different communities adopted their ordinances. Some of them just adopted an ordinance that said, see the manual attached as exhibit A. The manual's like 70 pages, there's a lot of other information in there that's not part of the uniform standards. I didn't really like doing that to attach a 70-page exhibit, so.
You're welcome.
So I extracted, I extracted out the actual five components and 17 principles. This is exhibit A, but it's not a 70-page exhibit. But anyway, this is what, the template that most communities in Indiana have already adopted, or in the process of adopting this month, so this is kinda consistent with what everyone else is doing. Once again, these are minimum standards, and any point in time, if the council so chooses, you can enact more stringent standards, but this is the minimum requirement for us to comply with the Indiana Code and State Board of Accounts. One additional requirement, about to keep talking here, but one thing that we need to do, that all employees technically have to do the training, I think we've talked about this at a public meeting, the training, the minimum training is basically to watch a 25-minute video, you can watch it online, on the State Board of Accounts website, I can send that link to you all. Technically, all employees that handle money and make fiscal decisions, which includes other boards, such as redevelopment and sewer board and so forth, and other employees that handle money, technically, people within the Parks Department, they, they need to have the training in place. So as, as the, as the fiscal body, I mean, we're not technically, we're not the executive, so I don't know, I kinda spoke previously to Les to see who's handling that training to make sure they at least watch the video, because there has to be a form by the end of the year that everyone has to sign, who, who are employees that fall under this criteria, and we'll have to have that on file with the clerk, and Vicki's been on top of this about what needs to be done, but I just wanna make sure that the other employees are, are gonna be watching this video. I'll send a link to you guys, and I'm handling the boards that I represent to watch this training video, so.
So we are not sure who is going to be, like, just making sure that all.
It's all the controller.
It will be under, okay.
Yes.
So we have to.
So, for example, if I watch the video and fill out the form, I would send it to you?
Actually, Vicki.
We have to, yeah.
How is that gonna?
The council, everybody on the council has to watch the video.
And sign it.
Sign a form and get to the clerk, so that she has it on file.
Okay.
We have to upload it in the gateway.
There will be a test, we won't know when, but you have to watch the video, Scott.
I do wanna applaud the clerk's office, because all her employees have already been trained and certifications been filled out, so she's ahead again.
Who's handling with the other employees?
And they are standing online.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. Because I know there's several, even like, I guess technically, the part-time employees of the Parks Department who handle money.
It's pretty much gonna be everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And then, well, and then we need to have, like.
It covers everything.
Yeah, technically, well, technically, in the manual, the uniform standards, to, to let them know that technically, they either have to have a copy of it, or they're sent where the link is to technically review, or have access to that manual, that's the other.
Yeah, we'll all have meetings and everybody get together for a power and.
Okay.
Scott, if, if I may ask, and if we don't?
Well, if we, if we don't, if you read the statute, technically, the DLGF has the power if this is not done, if the ordinance is not in place, and you don't have the proper certifications that the employees have went through the training, technically, it says the DLGF can withhold approval of your certified budget and withhold the distribution of funds to finance your government. That's what it says.
Well, they're ready to enforce this, because we heard that IAC training that we were, we were at, just not too long ago.
I don't think it's an idle threat, I mean, I think they're serious. If you don't, they will withhold your budget certification, withhold the distribution of your tax funds.
So Scott has the ability.
So I had the ability, and somebody read this.
To withhold all the dispersals.
Train wreck the entirety.
That's right. That's right.
And it all has to be.
I might give cards from Home Depot.
Some random employee, some random employee. And I think it all has to be done by December 31st.
There's some, yes, December 31st, by this calendar year.
Video watching and the ordinance has to be done by December 31st.
All right.
Yeah, so we have.
Clock's ticking.
So we have time to do this, but we just, and I'll, you know, obviously, this is probably, you know, this will be approved on the third reading, the second meeting in December, I'll remind everyone once again, the second meeting in December, I'll send out the link to make sure everybody has the link to watch this twenty-five-minute video.
Yeah, but how will we know that they actually did? Are you, so you're organizing group sessions?
It's on the honor system.
On the honor system.
But with the employees, you're doing group.
Yeah, we're doing group.
Yeah.
Let's meet thirty minutes before our next meeting.
Yeah.
That way I don't have to.
With elected office holders, I mean, technically, the State Board of Accounts says that's okay. You're on the honor system. Elected office holders to certify. You watch the video. I will send you the link. It doesn't take very long to watch. It's very easy to click on.
So I have a question. Like, I'm on the Solid Waste Board at the county. Scotty's on the non-1-1 board, fiscal non-1-1 board at the county. Do we have to have one of those forms filled out for each?
So like, for redevelopment?
Each governmental entity or each board?
Each governmental entity.
Each governmental.
And I hope it's a different video.
Yeah, it's one video that applies to all governmental entities. So you have to have a separate form for each governmental entity.
So I'll have one on the count, one of the city, one of the county?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's the same form?
But, but because Callie's on redevelopment, she just needs.
Yeah, because I think with the City of Jeff on the form, I haven't.
It's all the same form.
Yeah, I've been looking, but I think you can make reference to that your city council motion and redevelopment. You can put it on the same form on behalf of the entity of City of Jeff. Yeah.
And you can fill out the same form for the county, too.
Gotcha.
This is eighty-four? I'd like to make a motion to approve 2016 OR 84 on the first and second reading.
Motion in the second. Anything further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Lewis, this is a resolution designating and authorizing the certification of the Jeff Arts and Cultural District.
Yes, I was asked to prepare this ordinance by Mr. Samuel and on behalf of the city. The city is moving forward with the administration to have the establishment of what we call an arts and cultural district. There's something called the Indiana Arts Council through the state government that issues grants and other assistance to communities that establish and designate an arts and cultural district. So I know the administration is getting all the requirements in place, and this is one of those requirements on the checklist to receive grant money from the state is to establish such a district. This particular resolution is the recommended form from the Indiana Arts Council from the state of Indiana for communities to adopt. And I did certify with them their sample form. It can be in the form of a resolution out of ordinance. So the language in here tracks the template that has been issued and published by the Indiana Arts Council. The particular map you see was, the map was created by the administration by Nathan Pruitt and I believe maybe Rob Way from Redevelopment. And I think Nathan may have been involved in that. Nathan can speak to more details. So this arts and cultural district map was created by the administration. They are on board to move forward with this particular project.
We can, just to add a little bit to Mr. Lewis, we can ourselves just call whatever area you want our arts and cultural district. We can just do that. But to be a true designation in the state, at the state level, you have to outline your boundaries. And that designation at the state level does open up some potential opportunities. And I've been working, communicating with Rob Way's on particularly downtown, where the area they want it. And they came up with a map, and I'm just kind of the messenger, I guess, to get it done here. And so.
And I think through my research, and Nathan, you may know the exact number. I can't remember the exact number, but I think there's only eight or nine.
I would have said eight.
Actual certified designated arts and cultural district in Indiana. So we would be.
That's a nice small pool for us to pull, right?
So, yeah, so we would be one of the few in Indiana by going through this process to have an actual certified and designated.
And to add to that, there's already the, at the state level, they, they're very interested in helping us in the area where this is with some, a significant grant. But they said, really, you need to do this before we can do that. They want to use this as a pilot. And so it's, it's, it's good. So with that.
What's the resolution?
Eighteen. I'll make a motion to approve 2016 OR eighteen.
No, it takes one approval. Yeah, one reading.
I have a question.
Sure.
Article six says that the Public Arts Commission will be the governing board for the district. What does that mean?
Well, we have that Public Arts Commission right now that's kind of more of an advisory group. So we talked about amending that to make it a little bit more concrete. But you basically, the, the, the resolution, the Indiana Arts Council, you have to have an entity to oversee the cultural district, the arts district as far as placement of art and so forth. So we have that committee in place.
Right.
That says that, you know, all of the introduction of public art comes before them.
Sure.
But as far as final, like, funding approval and fiscal body and so forth, the city council still have the ultimate say for many sort of legislative or fiscal matter. That's by statute. We're the fiscal and legislative body. But that's kind of like the entity that would meet to discuss, you know, the arts projects that go into that district.
So like, many, many of the properties in the district are owned by redevelopment. Would the Arts Commission have some sort of governance over what redevelopment would do with those properties? Like, one is where Maker 13 is, one is where the, the Fire Museum is. I mean, what is, what is governing board for the district ultimately mean? You know, what is, what is the, what's the extent of that governance?
Well, for.
Is it, is it, I mean, if it's, if it's placing public art or what the art looks like, the aesthetics look like?
Yeah, I mean, they would have, they don't, if they don't own property, they could not decide what's going to happen to a piece of property. It has to do with public art, just like the Public Art Committee says the placement of public art on public property that the City of Jeff owns to kind of approve the aesthetics. I can't, I don't have that current.
I was going to say, I would say, Matt, that the public art, and it's a committee right now. And that's, I was going to ask Scott about that in a second, instead of commission. But, but at this point, anything on, on city-owned property, any public art before it can be put there, has to go before the Public Art Committee for approval. And if it's not, I guess in theory, if it's not approved, then they can't place it there. That hasn't been an issue. Don't anticipate it being an issue. I guess it could be an issue at some point. But it, it doesn't have anything to do with controlling the property. It's, it's the.
The art, it's just proposed art. The arts, like, say if you have an art program to.
You just want the programs and the arts.
Yes, it has nothing to do with property. Yeah, there's not going to be only.
That's the end, I think.
So you could basically say that currently, the Public Arts Committee is the governing board for the whole city.
Technically, yes. And we use, we've used the name interchangeably. The Public Arts Committee slash Commission used the name. There is a committee in place that does that. So this, this has nothing to do with, with, with control over property, that redevelopment or even property the city owns, only in regard to the arts projects.
Okay. But if redevelopment, if they own a piece of property and they decided they were going to do a project, they could decide on their own because they own the property, is what I understand.
Well, but technically, when we set the Public Art Committee, that already applies to a city-owned property as far as aesthetic art projects. Not the purpose of the property. I mean, it's, I mean, you can't, this has nothing to do with where the Public Art Committee's going to say, oh, you can't build a hotel there at redevelopment. Nothing like that. It's, it's the public art.
Yeah, the way I would interpret that is if redevelopment said, we want to put a fifteen-foot statue of Callie there.
Oh, Callie.
Then that would, they themselves could not. They would have to bring it to us with rendering, whatever, and say, this is what we want to do. And.
And of course, they would approve it, because it's Callie.
Yeah, I don't know why we wouldn't, but.
Well, what's the opposite if they have, redevelopment has property, and they decide to sell that property, but it has art on there? So does the art go with the property, or do they get the art back? Because they may decide they want to, they may decide.
That would have to be in a contract or a contract.
Yeah, that would be in the contract. When you sell property, you always have details about, does it include the building? Does it include attachments or other, you know, fixed infrastructure to the property or non-fixed? I mean, that, that's all spelled out in the contract.
So if I understood you correctly, Nathan, what you just said was, if redevelopment decide to put a statue there, the committee could say no, and it wouldn't happen?
I believe that's accurate.
I mean, that's, yeah. Well, I don't think it necessarily gets vetoed, but it says all public art placed on public property right now in that resolution. It has to come, and they have to, I mean, they approve it, but it's still subject to, I think it's still subject to other boards that own the property. They have to bring it to them. I don't think they have flat-out veto power.
I mean, Dawn has, Dawn has presented to redevelopment several times about upcoming projects and status of.
Right, but what I'm saying is, it's a question of how much.
Authority they have?
To restrict something, a property, right?
I guess it's looked at as being all cities, so it's, I mean, I know it's a different board under the city, but it would be city property.
Yeah, I don't think the, the, the resolution doesn't give, the way it's written now doesn't give them veto power. It says it has to be brought before them, and they decide, it's discussed with them, but there's language in there that the final approval still is any particular property owner, whether it's redevelopment, or say the Sewer Board, or Board of Public Works. I mean, they still have the final say on property owned by the city, but it initiates and goes through the Public Art Committee as it stands.
Yeah, I mean, it makes that, like, just like if there is a matter that was, this is an engineering matter. I mean, a board wouldn't make a decision on an engineering matter without consulting the engineering department. And I feel this is much the same way. Like, Public Arts Commission is created to manage all of the public art, so.
The intent is not for it to be like a power play.
No.
But I guess it, I mean, I understand to make sure it doesn't get to that point. You know, I guess. But, and I guess another question, Scott, or a question, in my closing tonight, I was going to comment about another, an ordinance about the Public Art Commission that we'll talk about later. But does the, does this, because we don't have an official commission established, does this need to say committee in this, or does it really?
I mean, because we.
We use it interchangeably.
We're using it interchangeably, yeah. I don't see it that, because I don't see, because what we're going to do with that Public Art Committee resolution, we're going to formalize it more to our commission, to be in align with the Indiana Arts Council and their requirements and so forth.
When do we expect that ordinance to come through, proposal?
For the Public Art Commission? Trying to get it on for the next meeting, because those are some of the checklist that the administration needs to submit the application to make sure all this stuff is in place with the state.
You already made a motion, correct?
There was a motion in the second for sixteen OR eighteen. Anything further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? Motion passes.
Oh, just one thing, too. Just right before the meeting started, Les, heck, me, that's mercury. Just apologize for not being here tonight. His wife is sick, so you have to get home with the kid that he's sick. So I just wanted to.
Scott, did you have anything else for a report?
Uh, no.
Okay, any department heads? Seeing none. Public comment, do we have any? No public comment. We'll go to council comments. Mr. White?
No comment.
Ms. Yon?
No comment.
Maples?
No comment.
Ms. Gil?
Yes, I got one. And talking with Paul and Heather this morning, they asked me to bring it up. We, you know, the council always gives twenty-five thousand for the ice rink. We approved to come out of gaming to go into their fund twenty thousand for Steamboat Days. That was not used. So I wanted to see if I could get the approval for that twenty thousand to go, instead of going to Steamboat Days, to go towards the ice rink from the council. And that would be twenty thousand. They usually ask twenty-five. So if they need the other five thousand, the only place that we identified where to come from would be our special projects, which then Vicki would have to put a claim in. So.
So, I'm sorry. So we allocated twenty thousand from gaming, like, last year, and they didn't use it?
No, we did it this year.
Okay.
And we did it in a council meeting, because we had to move the money, but, which we didn't budget for that twenty-five thousand. Or there's no more money in gaming, so they're asking to use that twenty thousand instead of for Steamboat Days, to use it for ice rink.
Why did they move it in the first place?
The council at the time to use it towards Steamboat Days, but since that intention is not needed, then where did that, you know, use that money towards ice rink? It all goes into the same fund.
So it wasn't like an additional appropriate or anything?
It was.
They got enough sponsorship that covered everything for Steamboat Days, where normally twenty-five thousand from respective boards is used.
Okay.
Does this go along with, I was thinking we had allocated some money already for the ice skating rink. This, is the total of twenty coming or from the?
That's it.
That, or is there this twenty plus the, some other that we committed?
There is no more money from gaming. The total amount will be the twenty thousand.
We didn't budget for the ice rink? Oh, we did. The ice rink wasn't in the twenty sixteen budget?
Fifty thousand budgeted in gaming.
Uh-huh.
For the council's special projects. Twenty thousand went towards Steamboat. Thirty thousand went towards.
Jeff High.
Right. But there wasn't a.
And then it was.
No, that's it.
It's doubled up, and we need more appropriation. We'll get it later.
There was no line item for the ice rink in the budget?
No, it was appropriated, but it was, it was sent to special projects, and that money went towards Jeff High Theater instead of going towards the Parks for the ice rink.
Gotcha.
Because it was quicker to go ahead and pay for Jeff High Theater now, and then we'll get the appropriation later when we.
So not, not to beat a dead horse, I just want to make sure I'm asking the right question.
It's not an additional.
Then the, the council, what I consider the council's input into the ice skating rink, not our money, but, but our, our money into the ice skating rink is twenty thousand dollars, and it's coming, actually, it was, was for Steamboat, but we're going to move it to ice skating. Okay?
Because technically, we made the motion for it for Steam, so I didn't know, I said, I need to bring it up, because it's going to be spent.
So just.
It's just a, it's basically a receipt into the same fund. It's the same fund. Nothing really changes on the ledger-wise. It's just to clarify.
Exactly, it's used.
To clarify that your intentions at the time are now kind of changed.
So hypothetically, if, if they had not collected as many sponsorships as they did, and that twenty thousand had been used for Steamboat Days, then we would need to be finding twenty-five thousand elsewhere right now.
That's correct. And if you remember last year, too, there was some discussion about that there was a possibility the ice rink wasn't even going to happen this year.
Right.
Yeah, we took it out of the budget at one point, and then it got put back in.
So the Steamboat Days, did they have a twenty thousand dollar profit?
If all of the revenues and expenditures come out of the Fund 209, so if you look on your sheet that I just gave you tonight. The revenues for Steamboat Days as included in.
What page is that?
It's been sixty-two thousand, five eighty-five, which is on page fifteen. And the revenues are forty-six thousand. But they had something also that was.
That don't add up.
But the revenues all go in the same place. I mean, it's all going in the same 209. And that's where ice rink gets paid from, and that's where Steamboat.
Yeah, but why I said I needed to bring it up here, because council made approval for it to go to Steamboat, and that's not going to Steamboat. It'll be now going, so I felt we needed to do it again here.
Yeah, I think you would need a motion then.
Yeah.
Fire a motion where that was allocated, so you.
The problem is that with the Steamboat Days and with the ice rink, both, both events or both, whatever you want to call them, are funded by multiple sources. So if we're saying that they didn't need the twenty thousand dollars from the council, well, they probably used some money from either redevelopment or UEZ.
Seventeen thousand dollars from the UEZ.
So they needed seventeen from UEZ, but they didn't need the twenty from the council, when those, those entities were all under the assumption that we were giving equal parts in funding these activities. So, I mean, if they had twenty thousand dollars that they didn't need to use, then maybe ten thousand should have gone back to the UEZ, and ten thousand should have came back to the city.
Reallocated proportionally to.
Well, I think you brought it up in a meeting about how they didn't spend, that we actually came out ahead in Steamboat, didn't you?
It's not really like they came out ahead.
Oh, I don't know. I'm just, I just know we made, we made a different motion.
Does the UEZ give money to the ice rink?
We gave seventeen thousand dollars to the ice rink.
So is that something that needs to be, I mean.
We can do it, we can do it next meeting.
What they say is coming out ahead, I don't know if they mean they didn't spend all of their budget.
Right.
Because they didn't, they, they did not spend all of their budget at Steamboat Days. So that's where I'm suing their thinking that they didn't. Doesn't mean that they just spent that same amount of dollars.
You were in the same meeting as me this morning. You know what, we were told, so.
That's what we were told, yeah.
If you want to make a motion, we'll.
All right, I make a motion that the already approved money out of gaming that's already been moved, the twenty thousand went to Steamboat, now goes to the ice rink.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll sit over here.
Motion in the second. Anything further?
So are we still going to address that the other boards have contributed, or is this going to impact that? If we go ahead and change the intention of this money, will that seal in that?
I would just like clarity, too, on the numbers, because they said that there was, they didn't need the twenty thousand, yet the numbers that I just heard, the revenue was forty and the expenses were sixty.
Right.
And so it just, it just seemed, there's something out there that we don't know. And I would.
Want to hold off on this and let Paul come?
Leftover from the budget from last year, is what I thought of.
I mean, we can look at last year's revenues, and we can look at.
I just would like to know the answer.
Right now, the ice rink's brought in forty-three thousand, and they spent eighty-eight thousand.
Yeah, and the total's what, a hundred and, like, a hundred and thirty-something thousand? Budget.
I'm fifteen.
All right, fifteen.
Well, it sounds like I'm going to withdraw my motion. And we'll have Paul come next meeting.
Well, and.
If he withdraws his.
With the funny part of this, I understand, where we're going to see what they mean by saying that they had money left over. I understand. But then, any time that we're going to have this situation where there's different entities pooling in money to do something, I think we ought to take an approach to where the most local of those units is the one that, the most universal of the units should be the ones that get their money back first. For example, in this instance, if there was money to be given back, I don't know, are you going, if there were four different groups giving money, are we going to split it up four different ways? And how would that even affect the people that the money's going back to? To me, that seems pretty cumbersome. I think, in this regard, I think when it happened in the UEZ, redevelopment, I think, chipped in money as well. I think the city is, we're the ones that should be getting that money back. Because, yes, the city benefited, but not to the degree that that UEZ zone and redevelopment did. And that's just my two cents worth. But I, I think that, that would be my standard moving forward, would be the most, the entity with the least direct involvement. forward, would be the most, the entity with the least direct involvement in whatever it is, should be the one that's getting its money back.
Well, that's a, that's a.
That may have made no sense.
That's a difficult precedent to set, though, when you talk about any sort of future circumstance where this might happen again, and determining which board has.
Well, that, but at least it's a standard, because it is as it is now, I'm sure it's happening all the time, because every time we're allocating money to something, where other big people are joining in, that's relying on revenue to come in to help offset that cost, there's always gonna be a balance at the end. So if there's always a balance, that means every time, we're gonna have to sit and meet, and, oh, gosh, well, you know, this.
That's, that's part of the reason why you adjusted the transfer out amount for two thousand and seventeen to cover, because you've already transferred two hundred and forty-seven thousand from other funds into Two-O-Nine, that's activity, plus the twenty thousand. So if you wanted to look at who's giving the most money, you know?
I would also say that it's, it's not a UEZ project, it's a city festival. So, five years ago, four or five years ago, it was thought up to split it three ways, Ice Rink and, but that doesn't necessarily have to be the model we, we use now.
Yeah, and then the previous year, I think a lot of the motions were made contingent upon the other boards gave, it was either they all give or nobody gives type of mentality, was my understanding, so.
Got too much money left over, arguing over it all, man, it's tough.
Well, they just said that if we, they don't get this, they're gonna be short in Ice Rink, I'm like, well, I'll bring it up. So I did.
So it sounds like you would rue your motion here and get some more clarity?
Yes.
Well, there will be a Parks Board, and then we'll have another meeting, or we'll have an update.
If, if you all want to compare this, page twelve through, page twelve starts your revenues on the Two-O-Nine fund, the Parks and Safety Fund, and then thirteen, I think, starts expenditures, and so, page fifteen. So you can see, I mean, if you wanted to match them up, your Aquatic Center brought in two hundred and twenty-two thousand, and they spent three hundred and four thousand. But there are some activities that made more money than they spent. And then there's also the revenues that aren't necessarily tied to a specific activity, which would be like your main transfer in, if you guys do.
My mind's not with me tonight, so I'm not.
Oh, the regular Parks, the regular Parks.
Taking no action tonight on that, or?
No.
That's what it sounds like. Did you have anything else?
And then if there's any kind of city partner, um, donation, I don't think that sometimes does need.
Did you have anything else?
Uh, yes, I wanted to make sure we find, so how soon will she get her accounts and her petty cash and be ready to go for the ordinance violation bureau?
Yeah, I think that, any time, petty cash isn't necessarily a claim, but is that true, Scott? You know, petty cash, check for petty cash.
No, because usually, usually your ordinance covers.
Right, so we can just write that check, but it doesn't necessarily have.
Yeah, 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 petty cash is a dollar amount.
Yeah, I thought so, too, that's why I'm asking.
I just can't remember what our threshold is that defines petty cash.
Uh, the ordinance they approved was a hundred dollars each.
Yeah, so once that ordinance is approved, then you don't have to prove that you're gonna, as a claim, if it follows, follows that dollar.
Because we've got two departments that this lost revenue, they wanna get, they wanna write their tickets, especially Animal Control, they're really in a bind, so we've got to get this.
They wanna write those tickets.
Okay.
They wanna write those tickets, that's what I took from that.
Well, we've had some vicious dogs and things, that, I mean, they can't do anything with the ordinance, because, so this is established. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, H?
Uh, I, I do have a question. Maybe the basis of where I'm reaching my conclusion is wrong. So if we enter into a, an agreement with other governmental bodies on the cost of something, and this something that we're doing, like the Ice Rink, or the many things that we do, also have a revenue stream that come in, if that revenue stream ends up being short, so the anticipated revenue was X, and it came X minus whatever, who's ultimately on the hook for the rest of that X? Us?
Well, if there's all, there's cash balance in your fund, that is a carryover amount that you had from your prior year, or you have other revenues to cover, like, if you're just specifically talking about the fund for Two-O-Nine, is that, or are you talking about?
Any intergouver- any intercity or intergovernmental agreement, really intercity is what I'm focusing on with this question, then I'm not even worried about where the fund is coming from, I'm saying that we, the city, not UEZ, not redevelopment, if we've entered it in an agreement with them, and there's a shortage, we ultimately pay that shortfall.
Yes, no fund can end the year in the negative, in their cash.
Okay.
So if we go.
Unless it's a reimbursable grant, and you have.
We go three ways on seventy-five thousand dollar budget, and the Ice Rink goes to eighty-eight thousand, the cities are gonna be responsible for the balance, making up that.
That's the way it's all been.
Right. Okay, we wouldn't go.
That's why I said they have got to budget and manage these bets of projects.
And that's why we, that's why we assume, all of our, estimate our revenues very conservatively, because we don't want to overbudget something.
So to your point, when there's an excess.
That's right. Because it's technically not a joint project, technically, if you're reviewing something more into like a joint project, where all the entities are sharing all that buildings and all, basically, what these other entities provide, like that, it's just a contribution which, it's a critical part of cost.
Well, and.
Not, not.
So that's. And, and verbiage on my part may have been a little poor, but that's what I was getting at, and so that's why I'm, when I'm looking at where this extra money should go, extra money, unused money that partners pooled in together, if we're the ones that gotta pay the overage, then we should be the ones getting it back.
That benefit.
That benefit.
From something.
And, I mean, I mean, that's not a debate we have to continue now, I just wanted clarification to make sure I was thinking along those lines correctly, and it sounds like that I was. So good for me, this one time. All right, uh, that's it, that's all.
Well, in a long life, what you just said, it's sometimes where you, I've heard more than once that, you know, it's a two thousand dollar profit, for looking at these.
Not necessarily a profit, it's just that they spent twenty thousand dollars less than what they were budgeting for.
Which will never happen again after tonight. They'll spend that money from now on.
Because my first thought was, well, you lose money, though.
Right.
Well, but that's not the case, they really did spend over the, over the amount they had. They just didn't lose as much as they thought they would. Right, basically.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Samuel? Yeah, um, the, uh, comment about a deceleration lane on Tenth Street. The, right across from, right where the, the new Clark Cuddy Auto Auction is going, there's no red light there, there's not a red light planned at this point. Uh, if you could imagine, you're coming down Tenth Street from downtown, from here, headed north, northeast, um, to get into the, the location there, if you're coming that direction, you've gotta turn a left into the median, and then turn a left again, and then get into the, that. I've talked to the city engineer, Andy Crouch, about, there's, it's gonna be a traffic, in my opinion, a traffic, and I'm not an engineer, a, a traffic nightmare, um, when, when folks have to come in and do a U-turn, or you get a semi coming in with trucks, doing a U-turn there, there, again, there's no light, so there's gonna be a stacking of some cars multiple times, uh, through the week, and I'm, I'm concerned about safety, uh, right there. A deceleration lane could go into the median, just for, right there, at least those, those cars and/or semis, whatever it goes in there, could pull off, out of the fast lane on Tenth Street. The issue is, Andy says he doesn't have any, basically, any money for that, I believe it's gonna be close to eighty thousand dollars, that's what I believe he told me, that I can get firm cost. I'm not asking for any money tonight, or anything, I'm trying to raise awareness, um, because I, because I've, I've mentioned it to, um, uh, I've talked to Rob with redevelopment, seeing if there's any, any way for them to help, because of, maybe consider that's redevelopment, redeveloping part of that, no money there. So, I, I, it, it's gonna be an issue, somebody's gonna get hit, um, my office is, uh, Child Place is right, right there as well, we have kids that stand right out there on the road to get on the bus, we have kids that get off the bus, um.
On Tenth Street?
I brought all that up when we were.
So it's, it's, it's gonna be an issue, I'm concerned about safety, um, we need to.
The auto auction?
They, no, they, they were gonna, they said they would, this is all, um, speaking, nothing and writing, they said they would look to help pay for half of a red light, but not, not the D cell, they said we don't have it for the D cell. So, I think at some point, there's gonna be a study for the, a red light, I, I, we have, we have a lot of red lights, but, but, I, but there's a huge amount of traffic.
Yes, we brought that up specifically at the planning and zoning meeting, and we said, is this gonna be an issue, and we were told, we're only gonna have them going in Wednesdays and Saturdays, it is not gonna be an issue, traffic's not gonna be an issue, and I'm like, I don't see how that, and now, and here we are.
I, I'm just saying, it's on, it's on, yeah, that, I'm just bringing it up, about it is, it is an issue, um, our city engineer acknowledges there's a concern, and I'm gonna keep, keep, um, mentioning that, I've already talked to the auto auction folks, and I've got, already got their response, but, um, I'm just gonna keep raising the issue, so that, that's, that's one of my points.
I would imagine that, throughout what we wanna go, it's gonna be a reactionary measure, that they're gonna wanna wait to see if there's a problem before they address it.
Yeah, it was in a planning meeting when we proved all that.
The second, second comment I have, um, I, I appreciate Lisa, and I, I usually, usually I try to tell you that for looking at claims, and also Dustin, for, for looking closely at the claims, that's our, that's our job, and, and it's, it takes a lot of time to do that. But I have a question, um, if, if any one of us just says, I wanna, before we make a motion to approve the claims, I wanna pull that claim, we, we pretty much have supported that, but we never really, if, if truly, if one of those claims tonight, that I didn't, I thought, well, we should've gone and paid that claim, um, I think we need to consider saying, well, hang on, let's, let's, I don't agree with that, let, let's take a vote, do we, do we all support removing that, because potentially, some of the claims tonight, five of us would've said, let's go ahead and pay that. Right. Out of respect to each other, we've said, I, okay, we'll pull it, but I just think that's, that's an issue that we, we need to consider and think through.
Yeah, and then I never recommend pulling a claim without always talking with Heather and the department head, and, and all that, too, so.
Well, and, and with the.
Or I'll pull a non, not.
Have to be approved by the Parks Authority Board, we're still gonna pay the utility bills, though, prior to the meetings, so that we don't have any late fees, or lights turned off, or any of that kind of stuff.
Maybe in code, we'll figure out, there's certain.
Allows for that.
Our claims.
Yeah, we have, we have an ordinance on that, too.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that you can make certain claims before, you ask for some approvals, something like that, utility bills.
Yeah, they will.
But it's written, that it's written in that ordinance, that we can, we should be approving any claims that haven't already been approved by the Parks.
I have to review that, I'm pretty sure it's in that ordinance.
Recommended by.
It kinda goes before them first, but then, specifically said it comes to us, and I'll approve.
I've got two more points, and then, um.
In the previous council, was that council practice?
We would pull, we would pull claims on occasion, but, but I think, I think it was more like, well.
It wasn't a legal.
There was, yeah, it wasn't a legal claim, it was kinda not, not really a question, so, it, so, I'm sure, yeah. I'd mentioned earlier, Scott, we've asked Scott to, to work on a, a, a Public Art Commission ordinance, that, that really what it does, it, uh, our Public Art group has been very successful the last couple of years, and things seem to be kinda rolling, snowballing, a lot of real good, positive things, but our, our current ordinance that establishes us, basically, it just says, your, your role is to approve any piece of public art that goes on public property. And, um, a- as things are growing, uh, we're looking at other communities that have very successful programs as well, and we wanna build our, the foundation of an art commission here in, in Jeff, and one of the thoughts is, one is to have more people on it, and that would include, um, the, the council members having an appointee, that's what we're talking about. And, um, uh, well, there, there's other duties and roles, or whatever, that are more established. Scott is, we've asked him to look at other communities, and see how they've set their art commission up, and so that's what I, we've asked him to do, um, we, we just wanna make sure that we, we build this, this, this group the right way, and, and are following what we should, we need to be doing, so that's what I've asked Scott to do, and he's, he's, um, he will be sending something out, hopefully before next meeting, if it doesn't get done before then, then it'll be next year, but that's, that, I'm just giving everybody a heads up of that, that, that'll be coming, and we can talk about it, or, or, uh, whatever at that point. And the last thing, it's good to see Captain Moylan here tonight, cleanly shaven, and, I feel very safe tonight. Thank you. That's all I have.
Never know, it's Nancy.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I don't have anything.
Okay, just a couple of quick things, uh, wanna make sure everybody has on their calendar, the city's holiday party is set for December the sixteenth, from eleven to one, at First Christian Church up on Middle Road, um, had it there in the past, it's just a, a holiday party for all the employees to come in, come together and share a meal, and be a little festive, um, so all the council members are invited to that. Also, it is our open enrollment period, if you have not gotten with HR to sign your open enrollment paperwork, you must do that, even if you're not changing anything, uh, you have to sign that every year. Ms. Conlin sent out an email about, uh, tickets to the Foodie Fest, I have those tickets, if anybody's interested, if not, I assure you, they will not go to waste, but if you are interested, you're welcome to them, that is tomorrow night, um, at Kai's, and then also, um, mostly for Mr. Samuel, but I wanted to kind of update for everybody, that redevelopment last week did approve a change order on the Allison Lane sidewalk project, to add, um, six pads for city benches, and four pads for public art. So I know that, that's one of the things that we've talked about a lot, is adding pre-poured pads for movable, quote unquote movable, public art.
Right.
So that we can.
Awesome.
Rotate some things around annually, or however often deemed appropriate.
Just another thing, at our next meeting, we need to.
Yes, we do need to make an appointment to VZA before. The end of the year.
That doesn't mean to.
Ed has meant to send out an email, but he, he lost his father, so I'm not sure he'll be having, he's sending an email out, I think.
That just takes what's needed, right?
Yes.
Right. I think that was everything that I have.
Motion adjourned.
Yep, did I forget something?
We have a question.
Okay. The motion and second to adjourn, we're adjourned.